Good evening and welcome. I'm going to call to order the Monday, June 17th City Council Regular Meeting. Councilmember Winterstein this evening is excused. First off, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'd like to invite anyone who'd like to join the council, myself, and the pledge, to please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, an interior republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item this evening is some special business, and I will head to the speaker's podium for ID 0503: Recognition of Issaquah State Legislative Delegation. So I would like to welcome and introduce our state legislators who represent Issaquah to this evening's council meeting. When I call your name, could you please stand so we may recognize you? Senator Mark Mullet, Representative Lisa Callen, Representative Bill Ramos, and Representative Tana Sen. Thank you. You can have a seat. You can stand. I'm going to be sure, but it'd be more comfortable seated. I also wanted to point out, too, that additionally Senator Lisa Wellman and Representative Milin Tai could not join us this evening due to prior commitments, but I want to make sure that we acknowledge them as well. On behalf of the City Council and the residents of Issaquah, I would like to express my appreciation for your hard work and your support during this 2019 legislative session. You helped deliver some incredible successes, and I would like to highlight a few. First, you committed $3 million to support the construction of the Issaquah Opportunity Center. This was one of just 12 projects out of 192 that was allocated $1 million or more, so we are extremely pleased with your advocacy and your efforts on this project. The second city priority that you delivered on was $400,000 to design the PFAS Pilot Cleanup. This is a project we are working on in conjunction with Eastside Fire and Rescue and the Department of Ecology, and it's a pilot cleanup for the Issaquah Valley Aquifer. It's critically important work to Issaquah, and we appreciate all your efforts to help us find funding to keep this going. In addition to those two projects, your support was key in extending the streamlined sales tax mitigation payments. These are payments that help make our City of Issaquah budget whole by providing almost $400,000 to help offset the revenue's loss when the sales tax was changed in 2007. You also allocated, this is my favorite, $8 million to widen State Route 18 from Issaquah-Hobart Road to Raging River. This will not only improve the safety but also the capacity of the regional road network that everyone who lives and works in Issaquah relies upon. And I know it may seem odd that this is not actually a road project in Issaquah, but what will make Issaquah work better is improvements to the regional system. So thank you very much for that. Across the state, you funded 19 law enforcement academies each year to ensure that we have the necessary training to staff our police department. You provided additional tools for the city to finance affordable housing. Thank you. You passed legislation committing the state to transition to clean, reliable, and defined, clear efficiency standards for buildings. And last but certainly not least, you supported salmon recovery efforts. If you have had the pleasure of attending our Salmon Days Festival, you know here in Issaquah how important that is. We have a huge connection to our salmon. So I wanted to thank you for a job well done. We're so appreciative of all the work that you did during the session. I also wanted to give you an opportunity to address the council this evening, and if you had some remarks you'd like to share, I'd love you to come on up and join me now.
So just a few kind of comments. And I think on the Opportunity Center, the argument that we made in Olympia and were successful with was the benefits from the Opportunity Center to expanding healthcare access to a wide range of people who currently don't have it was much greater than the Issaquah community. I think people from Maple Valley, Altus, Snoqualmie, and North Bend will benefit from this facility going in, and so it seemed unfair that the entire burden of that facility should be placed on Issaquah taxpayers. So I think the state clearly had a financial role to help facilitate something that's going to be a regional benefit, and I want to give kudos to the city. I know you guys wanted to improve Exit 17 and the interchange there, but I think you also were good regional partners in saying, let's all put our eggs in the basket of getting the design money so we can finish Highway 18. And we were successful, I think, by all the cities kind of putting aside some of their smaller individual items they wanted to get done and having everybody from Maple Valley to Issaquah all get, you know, their energy behind the Highway 18 project. I think that made it successful of getting, I think it was actually 27 million we got allocated to finish the design of that. And I think the sales tax mitigation, I will warn the finance people of the city, I think we have maybe about a two- to four-year shelf life of getting this extra money from the state as we build our budgets out. I think, yeah, it was awesome that we were able to get it extended this last budget cycle, and I think we have a coin flips chance in 2021 of getting a final two years. I think in 2023, we have, yeah, it's like winning a lottery chance, I think, of getting those payments extended, I think, beyond 2023. So I think as we build out the city's budget in those years, I think we should probably start to factor in that I think those payments will start to kind of gradually disappear, but it's great to work with the city, and it's always nice to be back in the room. I love this room.
Representative Sen? Thank you.
Thank you so much for having us today, and as always, it's great to see you. I just wanted to mention this past legislative session, I was a new chair for the Human Services and Early Learning Committee, which was great learning for me and really loved working on all those issues, and thrilled that my vice chair is Representative Callen. And so you have a really great team, or we have a really great team on that, and so I just wanted to acknowledge that. And one of the things about being a legislator is that you get to work on any issue that you want. And so I was thrilled to help lead on the condo liability reforms that we passed this year, which were great, and I know Shelley Heldor explained, and you guys have talked about in your past briefing on what happened in the legislature. And really, I also want to give kudos to Representative Ramos, who I think, well, Shelley mentioned that there were some really great things that came together to make the synergy of Highway 18 funded. It also was really because of Representative Ramos's undying advocacy for that project. So really, I think you have got some great new representatives, so I've been thrilled to work with them, and of course Senator Mullet. We've got a great team in the 41st, thrilled that we are part of Issaquah, and we'll continue to really see Issaquah as such a partner. And just on that, I have to say, so many of you came down to Olympia, and Mayor Polly was really so important on testifying on a number of issues that are important to cities. I also serve on the Local Government Committee and on the Budget Committee, and those local government issues and keeping local control and city issues at the forefront of a lot of the kind of issues that come before us that aren't necessarily city issues but have city impacts is really something that I look at as well with that filter. And so again, hearing from you and having you come down just really gives us a boost in some local stories to make sure that we're continuing to advocate for that. So thank you for all of that, and thanks for having us today.
It is an honor to be here and be able to get to talk to you post-session and to really celebrate with you our community, not only the 5th Legislative District, but all that Issaquah brought to bear in this session. Being a freshman legislator, having the immediate access that I did to Shelley, to Mayor Polly, to anybody that I need to talk to on a text basis when you're trying to move fast and make those decisions was extremely helpful, and I can't tell you how helpful it was and how many conversations I had. And you probably had multiple. I'm sure you probably had them with all of us all at once. Maybe we need to get a little bit better at coordinating these text messages so you're not having to do the same answer several times, but I greatly appreciate that. And it was very clear when I was down there, the regional viewpoint that was being taken by Issaquah, and I greatly appreciate that. The Highway 18 work certainly. One of the areas that, of course, with my education background and form, we worked hard on trying to expand our early learning capacity, and there's a reach from Issaquah all the way through the Snoqualmie Valley with the Encompass new buildup that they're trying to grow, and they have a pediatric therapy unit, so we're really pleased to be able to support that work as well that came out of the capital budget. So that was one of the extra areas that we were trying to push and make sure we've got expansion, and we'll continue to do in the Issaquah area as well. Looking forward to doing that, and I really appreciate your focus on the human services and of course your, I know the connections and the ties of how we're working together on education and where we're going with that, so I appreciate that work as well. And just to appreciate all of the public duty that you guys bring to the table on every aspect of this. So thank you.
Thank you, Representative Callen. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, a pleasure being here. I miss you, it's been about six months. But really, just what I want to say down there, what's so important is the working together of everybody and knowing who to call when you need information. And I'm going to tell a little story here, because I tend to tell stories everybody tells me. So, and Emily's already heard this one, but I was working on a bill down there that was going to take away, or there was a reporting requirement for cities for road pavement preservation, and it was onerous, and we wanted to do something to make it less onerous. So I started working on that, got a bill put together that was pretty good, and finally looked at it, and I kept thinking about it, I said, something's wrong. And I had the ability to call up our roads director here, Brett, and say, Brett, what's going on here? Talk to me about this. And with a 10-minute conversation with him, he got me going the right track, get what was wrong with it, totally threw out that bill, wrote a new one in its place, and got rid of any reporting requirement put on the city. We got it all put back on the state, so that's one thing he doesn't have to do from here and out near there's any other city, because it's already covered by the state. So they took a good bill and made it a really, really much better bill because of the local knowledge here of who can help us. So the point of that is, if you have anything going on, keep us informed. You got a mobility master plan going on, these new things that are happening, keep us informed. We're going to, I know you here, and I can call you as I did there, and just ask, what's going on? I'm working on something here. It may relate to you particularly. How can we make sure this works not only for Issaquah but the other cities in this district and the other cities in the rest of the state? I'll always be looking at that municipal, local situation. So thank you very much for all the time I had with you, and look forward to working with you more as we go.
Thank you, Representative Ramos.
Thanks for the chocolate.
And they all have a little bit of Issaquah Booms chocolate as a gift from our council this evening. And before I wrap this up, I just wanted to give an opportunity to council president or any other council would like to add some words tonight. It's fine. It's not required. It's just an option. Council President Mertz?
This is me speaking extemporaneously. Just thank you for attending this evening. It's critical that municipalities have good working relationships with our electeds in Olympia, and, you know, you've all done a great job of staying in contact with us and look forward to the rest of the, well, nothing more this year, but enjoy the downtime and look forward to doing this again next year.
Thank you, Council President. Deputy Council President Bateese?
I just wanted to thank each of you for coming this evening, and it's great to see all of you, and just to thank you for all the hard work that went into this last session. Just hearing everything come forward, like the Opportunity Center, what was happening with Highway 18, and all of the other great things that were worked on, and it was a lot of hard work and a lot of advocacy, and we, I very much appreciate it. Thank you for coming.
Any other comments this evening? Thank you all for listening. Again, thank you for all the work you did last session, and I'm sure that you would love to stay and hear another session this evening, but you are absolutely free to go. You do not have to stay. We wanted to say thank you, and we're glad that you came, so thanks very much. The next item on our agenda this evening is audience comments. Audience members can address their council at this time. The guidelines for participation are displayed on the screen. Please limit your comments to five minutes. Those who signed up will be asked to come and speak first, and if you have not signed up, I will ask if there is anyone else that would like to speak before we close this portion of the meeting. If you are here representing a group, can you please identify the group? And if you are in the audience this evening and you wish to demonstrate to council your support for a talking point or a message from one of our speakers, please raise your hand so that the council can see that. There's also two public hearings this evening. AB 7771, the Transportation Benefit District Assumption of Powers, and AB 7808, Conveyance of a Utility Easement at the I-90 Corporate Center Platte. If you want to make comments on either of these topics, you can do so during the public hearing. And with that, Tisha, has anyone signed up to speak this evening?
No.
Is there anyone that would like to address council this evening? Come on up, Julie.
Thank you. Julie Martin with the Downtown Issaquah Association, and I just want to thank you all for your support. We couldn't do what we do to connect the community and support the community without your support. We just finished up a wonderful vendors on Front Street yesterday. We estimate we had about 7,500 people that attended. If you went, it was quite busy on Front Street. The merchants said that they were busy as well, and everybody seemed to have a good time. We had about 600 cars in attendance. We filled up Front Street before 8:00 in the morning and overfilled all the way down into the XXX, so it was lovely. And thank you for your support of that event and letting us close the street. And then this Friday, we have Make Music Day all over town. We have eight stages where musicians will perform, and none of them are paid, and some people will be able to have a little harmonica lesson and a drumming lesson, and so it should just be a fun time. If you're around, come on out and join us.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address council this evening? This will be a second call, anyone wishing to address council, and a final call. Seeing none, we'll close that portion of our meeting, and we'll go to Committee on Regional Reports. Councilmember Walsh?
Thank you. I attended the Eastside Transportation Partnership Meeting on last Friday, and we had a good conversation about actually King County Parks, which was very interesting to come to a transportation board, but they were talking about there's going to be a levy in the August election. Then we were also talking about King County Metro and how they are looking for $220 million a year in order to fulfill what the public had said that they wanted out of their metro system, so they're looking at possibility of going out for potentially a levy lid lift or another option. They're talking to the King County, I think it's the RTP, the Regional Transportation Group, and so they're going to make a decision whether that's going to be 2020 or 2024. So we'll want to look for that, considering we're talking about our own TBD tonight. So that's all of my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Land and Shore Committee met on Thursday, June 6th, and we had three items on our agenda. The first one was Polygon Northwest Affordable Housing Development Agreement Amendment. This was a discussion item, and it regarded Polygon requesting council amend the affordable housing development to modify the minimum size of the two bedroom units. And this was a discussion item, and the committee had a discussion and then was recommending not to proceed further. The next item was AB 7802, Amend 2019 Docket of Comprehensive Plan Amendments to Add Community Facilities Redesignation and Rezone Consideration of Issaquah School District, Parcel A. This was a action item, and on this item, the committee did recommend that this be added to the docket as a first step for starting a conversation, and this is on the consent calendar this evening. And then lastly, we had a initial evaluation of Issaquah's residential zoning and allowed housing types. This is the first part of an ongoing discussion that the Land and Shore Committee has been having, and the committee recommended continuing the conversation. And then the next steps in this will be a memo, I believe, and then council will consider taking next steps and eventually developing an AV. And then I also attended the Council Ad-Hoc Committee regarding council rules of procedure. This committee met on June 4th, and this is Councilmember Winterstein and Councilmember Ray and myself, and we proceeded to edit and make comments on the first roughly half of that document, and then we will be meeting again tomorrow to consider the second half of that document and make suggestions and edits. And we focused primarily on best practices as well as documenting our existing practices in a number of areas. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray?
Thank you, Mayor Polly. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Mayor Polly. I also have no report this evening.
This is going well. Deputy Council President Bateese?
So the Eastside Human Services Forum is holding a board meeting on the morning of June 20th, and then they are holding their affordable housing educational event afterwards. That's something that I've spoken about before. I unfortunately am not going to be able to make that event. I know Councilmember Winterstein had reached out and asked about that, but I've also sent the invite to each of you, and so if that's something that is of interest, that invite is in your email. And that again is on June 20th at the Redmond Community Center from 9:00 to noon. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Council President Mertz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee met at 7:00 PM last Wednesday, June 12th, at Renton City Hall. The pre-PIC meeting was Metro, making the rounds. They were talking long-range transit vision and funding. They talked about Metro Connects. They sort of went through a funding exercise with us, and the purpose of the exercise was to show that it's hard to come up with the amount of money that they're interested in or that they need to fund Metro Connects and the planned growth of Metro going forward. So we came away from that meeting suitably understanding the challenge that they have in front of them. There is no simple answer, but they have a plan. Then the main PIC meeting at 7:00 PM, there were no potential action items discussed. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Council President Mertz. I'm going to add to council report out, because I did have the privilege this week of attending the Eastside Fire and Rescue, or last week, the Eastside Fire and Rescue Board Meeting with Councilmember Bateese. So here are a couple of notes from that meeting. We did celebrate a retirement recognition for Lieutenant DJ Brydenbaugh, who served for 33 years with Eastside Fire and Rescue. There was a very quick briefing on PFAS. Eastside Fire and Rescue, Ecology, and the City are meeting to work on next steps and scope for project work, and we will be working on filling some data gaps from the first phase of the study. Eastside Fire and Rescue is also currently hiring right now, and they're in the process of interviews. They have, I believe, four positions that are open. They have begun their audit work for the year with Clark Newber, and the big discussion got deferred because our regular members weren't there, and they really want to do it with you. So this is the governance question, and this is a topic that has been on the agenda over at Eastside and talked about for at least five years. So alternates and other electeds that are interested in this subject besides our regular members, which are Goodman and Ray, are encouraged to come and participate and listen. Eastside Fire and Rescue meetings are not taped, so in order to actually hear the conversation, you have to attend the meeting, but at some point in time, there will be a vote put back out to the members about governance structure, and so this is a little bit complicated. They've asked regular board members requested to review their summer vacation plans to ensure they can participate in the discussions. They want to make sure they have as many of the regulars as possible. They're hoping to have a vote by the end of the year, and as per Councilmember Ray's request, that going to be doing a pro and con analysis, we'll frame the discussion on the various alternatives. And the August board meeting has been canceled. I think that's the first cancellation we've got to talk about, Free Set Fire and Rescue. And the next board meeting is on July 11th, 2019, 4:00 PM at Headquarters. I'll move to the mayor's report. There will be no executive session this evening. I would like to provide a little information on the city administrator recruitment activities, and I will continue to do that as we move through the process. As I've said earlier, we have hired Caris Consulting to spearhead the recruitment process. Our job posting closed last week, June 12th. I will be meeting with Caris this week to look at a candidate list based on the screening interviews that they've been holding over the last few weeks. Laughing Jacobs Creek Basin Plan Interagency Agreement. If approved by both city councils, City of Issaquah and City of Sumamish, the Laughing Jacobs Creek Basin Plan Interagency Agreement would provide a framework for the cities of Sumamish and Issaquah to collaboratively develop a basin plan for Laughing Jacobs Creek. Approximately 10% of this basin is in the City of Issaquah, including the creek's outlet to Lake Sumamish. This reach of the creek contains primary spawning habitat for Kokini salmon, which are native to Lake Sumamish. The development of this plan would identify and prioritize actions to address flooding, prevent erosion, improve water quality, and create fish and wildlife habitat. I'm adding this information tonight because the item is on consent for your approval. The Talis Middle School Project. The Issaquah School District will be constructing a new middle school in the Talis neighborhood, and I'd like to give a few updates about this project. Our community is extremely interested in all things school. The plans for this middle school show the building at approximately 130,000 square feet, and it will house up to 1,000 students. Issaquah School District's target for breaking ground is this summer with completion in the fall of 2021, at the start of the 2021 school year. This timeline is ambitious. The project status, there's a site development permit currently under review. Issaquah School District has indicated that they are contemplating some significant changes to the site design based on comments they've received from the community and the public so far, and the city. King County Million Trees Grant. King County launched the 1 Million Trees Initiative following the county's adoption of its Strategic Climate Action Plan in 2015. The goal is to plant 1 million trees by 2020 as a way to support carbon sequestration and healthy forest streams in neighborhoods. To support the initiative for planting a large number of trees by the end of 2020, each RIAA-8 in King County was provided $175,000 to support tree planting through a grant process. The RIAA-8 project subcommittees have recommended a grant award to Issaquah of $75,000 to plant 10,000 trees over approximately 28 acres of city-owned parks and open space properties along Tibbetts and Issaquah Creek. Our partnerships with Mountains to Sound Greenway Trust and Washington Conservation Corps will allow us to maximize this tree planting effort by utilizing seasonal staff, AmeriCorps volunteers, and community volunteers across King County. The timing of this tree planting effort supports the larger Green Issaquah partnership that the city's kicking off this year with Forterra. The project will assess the city's forest health and ultimately inform a forest stewardship program that will support long-term enhancement, restoration, and maintenance of the city's forests and natural systems. This item is also on the consent agenda this evening for council. I wanted to add a few comments about the city council meetings and transition. During a council workshop last winter, council decided to go forward with a transition to a study session model versus a council committee structure. This is the first time for us as a city, and this process will feel different to the community, the council, and staff. As we move through this transition, I'll provide updates through my mayor's comments. Study sessions will be scheduled for the second and fourth Monday of each month. Committee meetings will no longer be scheduled as of September. Some of the things the public may notice is that there are more items on the consent portion of the regular city council meeting agenda, and that major policy discussions at study sessions will have all seven council members involved. And as was earlier mentioned, right now we have a council ad hoc committee that's reviewing council rules of procedure. My last item, Bergsma Funding Update. So the King County Conservation Futures Committee's recommendation was shared with the applicants last Friday. The City of Issaquah made an application for grant funding as part of the Bergsma acquisition, and in order for us to have a successful funding strategy, this was the key grant. We applied for funding as part of the strategy to fund the Bergsma acquisition. We received some great news last Friday, in that committee recommendation includes fully funding our application of $5.3 million for Bergsma. This is the amount we identified in our funding strategy last fall and have been discussing with agency partners as the full Bergsma acquisition scenario began to take shape last year. Once awarded later this year, these grant funds would represent a large portion of the partner funding we anticipated, but it's not all of it. Next up will be the state resource conservation grants that we will be applying for in 2021. Next up will be the state resource conservation grants that we will be applying for in 2020. This King County funding and the financial partnership it represents will only further strengthen these future grant applications. This news from King County is only a recommendation, so what comes next? These are funding recommendations made to the county executive, which will be incorporated into legislation and then approved by King County Council. Nothing is final, as this council knows, until the county council approves those recommendations. Legislation from the executive is moving forward later this month, and the goal of the King County staff is to have this legislative package passed by September. As we learn more, we will work closely with our many partners in making sure that advocacy continues and that throughout this adoption process, county council understands the broad regional support that the Burksma project has. And that concludes the mayor's report. We're going to move on to the consent calendar, which was distributed to council in advance. If authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved in one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? Council President Mertz.
Madam Mayor, I move we adopt the consent calendar as listed in tonight's meeting agenda.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? That passes unanimously. We're going to move on now to our public hearings. First one, AB 7771, Transportation Benefit District Assumption of Powers. At the May 20th council meeting, council approved resolution number 2019-05, setting tonight's public hearing date. I'd like to invite our management analyst, Gene Paul, to make a presentation. Good evening, Gene.
Good evening. My name is Gene Paul. I'm the management analyst in the mayor's office, and I'm here this evening to present on the Transportation Benefit District and the council's assumption of powers. There are three primary reasons for this presentation tonight. First, I'd like to provide information on the Transportation Benefit District, or TBD, and the proposed assumption of powers. This will be conveyed in a brief presentation with the opportunity for questions and council discussion. The second reason is for the public hearing that is required step in the assumption of the TBD. And finally, I would like to ensure the administration understands where you'd like this agenda bill to be placed whenever it turns to you for action. I would also like to be clear upfront, this presentation and hearing is only in relation to the TBD's governance. It is not related to any decisions regarding TBD revenue sources or any of the proposed capital improvement projects in the CIP. I'd like to begin with a very brief overview. In 1987, the state legislature created TBDs as an option for local governments to fund transportation projects. TBDs are independent public entities created for the purpose of acquiring, constructing, improving, providing, and funding transportation improvements within the boundaries of the There are a number of tools available for TBDs to raise revenue. The most common throughout the state are vehicle license fees or sales taxes. However TBDs generate their revenue, it may only be used for transportation improvements that appear on a local, regional, or state transportation plan. The term "transportation improvement" has a very broad definition. It includes not just roads and sidewalks, but also public transit and transportation demand management programs like commute trip reduction. Ultimately, construction, maintenance, and operating costs can all be paid for using TBD revenues. Moving from TBDs in general to the Issaquah TBD, the city council created the Issaquah TBD on January 16th, 2018. The geographic boundaries of the TBD are the same as the city, and the council is currently the governing board. However, the TBD is still a separate legal entity. That means for the council to act as the governing board requires meetings that are separate from city council meetings with the appropriate notices and agendas. As of July 2015, state law authorizes a city to assume the rights, powers, functions, and obligations of the TBD if it has the same geographical boundaries. This eliminates the TBD as a separate legal entity and allows the council to handle its governance as part of the council's regular meetings. And just to be clear, our TBD has not collected any revenue or taken on any financial obligations. According to the Municipal Research and Services Center, roughly 75% of the 110 TBDs across Washington have been assumed by their governing jurisdictions. The stat is shown here with the image on the left depicting all of the TBDs in the state and the image on the right reflecting all that have been assumed. Inside King County, 72% of the 18 TBDs have been assumed. State law requires a three-step process to assume the powers of the TBD. First, the council must approve a resolution declaring the intent to consider this matter and set a public hearing. This step was completed on May 20th, 2019. Second, the council must conduct the public hearing, which will occur after this presentation. Finally, the council must adopt an ordinance amending the municipal code to assume the powers. The draft of this ordinance was included in your packet for this evening. While it is relatively straightforward in replacing the language of governing board with city council, the ordinance also clarifies the language concerning the ability of the TBD to impose vehicle fees. The current version of the municipal code caps that vehicle fee at $20, which is actually more restrictive than state law. So the amended language in the ordinance aligns the IMC with the state law regarding these fees that can be imposed and their related timelines. For the public hearing itself, state law specifies the council must consider the assumption, conduct the hearing, and ultimately determine if the public interest or welfare would be satisfied by the city assuming the TBD. That concludes my informational presentation. I just want to determine if there are any final questions before we move to the hearing.
Thank you, Gene. Looking for questions. Any questions of council, and if there are none, I will open the hearing. None. Okay, I now -- thank you, Gene. I'll now open the public hearing at 7:36. And Tisha, has anybody signed up this evening to speak?
No.
No one has signed up, but that doesn't mean there's no one here to talk. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come up to the podium during this public hearing and talk to the council about the assumption of powers for Transportation Benefit District? I'll ask a second time. Anyone willing to testify? And a final time. So, seeing none, we will close the public hearing at 7:37. And unless directed otherwise, you have this conversation now. This agenda bill is scheduled to return to council on the consent calendar of the July 1st council meeting for adoption of an ordinance formalizing the assumption. What are your thoughts on that? Give a thumbs up, see some head nods. I'm thinking consent on the first is what we're going with. Thank you very much. If there's no further comments, the next item on our agenda this evening is AB -- thank you, Gene, AB 7808, Conveyance of Utility Easement, I-90 Corporate Center Plat. The June 3rd council meeting, council made a motion to set tonight's public hearing date. Council will be asked to take action on this item following the hearing under regular business. I'd like to invite Senior Engineer Jason Simpson to make a presentation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I just have a brief presentation for everyone here tonight in regards to a utility easement vacation at the I-90 Corporate Center Plat. The location of this plat specifically is generally in the location of the recent Southeast 62nd Street Extension Project and relates to it to some degree, as I will explain in a couple moments. The existing utility easement currently is 80 feet wide and spans between Lake Drive and Southeast 62nd Street. The current -- or the result of the Southeast 62nd Street Extension Project actually created a right-of-way easement that connected the two streets. The purpose of us here tonight, speaking on behalf of this existing easement, was ultimately to keep the construction project moving forward as not to delay any of the activity that was occurring as part of that Southeast 62nd Street project. So, the purpose really was to keep everyone moving and worry about the logistics of the outskirts of this existing easement that no longer are needed. According to the development agreement between the city and Costco, the two parties share responsibilities financially. The financial responsibilities specifically in that DA fall 52% to the city and 48% to Costco. The reason that that's important is because we are hoping that this existing easement that no longer serves a purpose will actually -- really, what we're trying to do is we've got -- the city and Costco have made an agreement that the portions of this existing easement that no longer serve a purpose can be negated for a agreement between what had occurred previously as part of that project, which was a PSC gas main relocation. The gas main was relocated into what is now Lake Drive as part of that right-of-way easement. The city, as a result, is responsible for 52% of that cost. Rather than paying that 52% of that cost, the city and Costco have agreed that vacating this easement would negate the financial responsibility. So, the staff recommendation is to set the public hearing, which we're having shortly, and ultimately hope to adopt the vacation of this existing easement. So, looking specifically at the location of this easement, as I mentioned, Lake Drive and Southeast 62nd Street did not previously connect. With that Southeast 62nd Street Extension Project, the city had adopted the right-of-way easement that connected the two streets. However, there are portions of that existing easement that no longer serve a purpose that are at the east and west extents of the new right-of-way easement, identified as such. As I mentioned, there is no longer utilities located in this existing easement, no longer serves a purpose, and therefore, the administration's recommendation is to vacate this easement. Given that this is a rather standard and straightforward procedure, which we're hoping to accomplish through the vacation, we recommend adopting a resolution for vacating the existing utility easement tonight.
Thank you, Jason. I'll see if there are questions. Councilmembers, are there questions about the request? Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you. It looks like there are maybe three different vacations in the pocket.
Correct.
There are three different easements that were recorded.
Correct.
Okay. So, if the easement no longer serves a purpose, I'm just curious -- I mean, there wouldn't be any reason for the city to use it. I'm just curious why Costco would be interested in paying to have it vacated. It would -- I'm guessing it's just certainty on Costco's part, but I would like to know what Costco's interest is to pay $25,000 to have it officially vacated.
I'm Sheldon Lind, the Public Works Engineering Director. I'll answer that question. Costco's interest lies in that, under their current plans for their new buildings and their development under the development agreement, the code requires them to have their buildings as close to the edge of the right-of-way as possible. And so, they're asking for the remnant easements to be vacated so that they're not putting their buildings over an encumbered piece of land, that we have a remnant easement associated with it. That's their interest.
Thank you. And then, I noticed in here that the fair market value, coincidentally, is the same price as Costco's share, and so can somebody explain why that would be coincidentally the same?
In conversation with the city attorney, and based upon what we've did for appraisals for acquiring the right-of-way for the Southeast 62nd/Lake Drive rights-of-ways, the market value and the appraisal that would have taken, the market value probably would have been a little lower than what this is and what Costco's willing to pay. And so, based upon that conversation with Mr. Haney, we determined that we didn't need to do an appraisal because the odds are we already did one about a year ago, and it demonstrated actually the value is a little bit lower, but Costco's willing to, in a partnership way, just pay our share of that one bill for PSC.
Do we use values that we obtained for other land in this part of this project based on appraisals we got just a year or so ago?
Yes. Yes. Pretty much along the same alignment even.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Additional questions? Councilmember Hunt, did you have a question? Okay. If there are no additional questions, I'll open the public hearing at 7:46. And Tisha, has anyone signed up to speak to this item?
No.
Okay. Is there anyone here this evening who would like to provide comment on the conveyance of the utility easement? Don't rush the stage. Second call. Third call. I will close the public hearing at 7:47. And the next item on the agenda then is the continuation of AB 7808 under regular business. And this is where you are now being requested to approve a resolution authorizing the conveyance of the utility easement. Is there any additional questions or discussion, or would somebody like to make a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I would like to move to approve resolution number
2019-6.
Declaring a utility easement in certain portions of the I-90 Corporate Center Plat to be surplus to the needs of the city's utilities and providing for compensation as a credit against the city's share of the cost of transportation improvement projects constructed pursuant to the Costco Development Agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there discussion? No discussion. It's very quiet tonight. If there is no discussion, I'm going to call for the vote, and I'm seeing if that seems like where we want to go. All those in favor of approving resolution number 2019-06, declaring a utility easement in certain portions of the I-90 Corporate Center Plat to be surplus to the needs of the city's utilities and providing for compensation as a credit against the city's share of the cost of transportation improvement projects constructed pursuant to the Costco Development Agreement, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously. And the next and second-last item on our agenda this evening is good of the order. Does anybody have something for good of the order? Councilmember Hunt.
I just wanted to note that the next council land and shore meeting is actually going to be on July 10th, 2019, and this is not the regular day, and the regular day falls on the 4th of July. So instead, it will be on July 10th.
Thank you for doing that. Any other good of the order? A little peek ahead at some upcoming council meetings. At the June 24th council work session, which will be at 6:30, potential agenda items include sewer extension to areas where onsite septic systems exist in the city, the 2020 to 2025 Capital Improvement Plan discussion, and the per and polyfluoralkyl substance report findings and next steps, PFAS next time. On July 1st, at the regular council meeting at 7:00 PM in chambers, potential agenda items include parks' master plans, Tibbetts Valley Park, Veterans Memorial Park, and Issaquah Creek Corridor, and public hearing on the 2020 to 2025 Capital Improvement Plan, including the Transportation Improvement Plan. Those are the things we're looking at coming up. There is no executive session this evening, and there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned at 8:50. 7:50. 7:50.